Our objective tonight is to get as much input as we can after explanation of what we're trying to accomplish, which we began three years ago. And then COVID got in the way. And we did a lot of preliminary work, but we really wanted to get community participation. And we wanted to start with the folks that really live in the center of town. And then from this point, branch out to get more government folks involved, and then the town in large. But we really wanted to include a circle of folks that you represent. And I know not everybody got the invitation that we tried to send, but we appreciate it that you've come. So we've been working with Central Mass Regional Planning for a long time. I got involved with them in the 1980s. And they've worked with us on a number of projects. And in the report, you'll see there's links to a great many of the reports that they've participated in with us, housing production plans, open space plans, things like that. So they were a logical group to go to, to help us with a look at the Center Village and what we perceive, really. What is it that we would like to have happen here? I mean, we often, I think, get the notion that it won't change, but the zoning that's in place will dictate certain things that are going to happen. If we don't want those to happen, then we need to have input in the planning board and modify some of the zoning, bring some modules to town meeting, and you can get a chance to make your voices heard there as well. So tonight, Carrie and Emily's assisting from the commission are here, and I'll turn it over to them.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks for coming.
Okay. So, good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for taking the time to join us tonight and talk about all things Berlin Center. I'd like to take a minute to thank the planning board, the Berlin Planning Board, for their assistance setting up this meeting and to help reserve this beautiful space, and to the Berlin Cable Access for helping us share this meeting on an online platform. So this is our planned agenda for tonight. I figured if that we would go around the room and do some introductions. I have some slides to present, and then we'll open up the floor for some open discussion. And at this time, if you could tell me your name and your address, and how long you've lived in Berlin, I think that would be a great way to start the introduction. And I'll start with, yeah, and the planning board.
So I'm Tim Wheeler. I live on Pleasant Street, so I don't live in the center. I live in South Berlin, and I've lived here for seven or two years.
Tom Sampit, planning board. I live on Sawyer Hill Road, way up near the Berlin line, north, north of Berlin. And I've lived here for almost 30 years.
Jay Teichman, planning board. Sawyer Hill Road, the top of the hill, Versus Island. And I've been here for 16 years, and a newcomer.
Carolyn McDonald, wearing my planning board hat tonight. Gaethjeon Road, in East Berlin. And I've lived in town for 20 years.
And Tom Andrew, I'm also on the planning board. I live at 11 Pleasant Street, which is just behind Savings Bank. I've lived in Berlin for 40 years. And in addition to living in the center of town, I'm a member of First Parish Church in Berlin.
Nice to meet you in Berlin.
Dave Westline, 196 Linden Street. And I've lived in town for about 12 years.
Rebecca Von Gelder, at 3 Linden Street, so I'm right next door. And I have been here five years.
Excellent. Thank you for coming.
Holly Permiter. I live at 104 Linden Street, about less than a mile, and I'm a member of First Parish Church and from the Benham Spritz Shop over here. And I've been in town 31 years.
Barry Ega. I live at 51 Sylt Street. I am a member of the Historical Commission here in First Parish. And I have a lot of here for so many years.
Probably should have added an administrator at First Parish Church also. And we'll go with that.
Okay. I'm MJ Stades. I've been back at 35, I've been back in town about eight years, been the family home since 1960. I work at the General Store for Ed here, and belonged here at 19 Carter, and on cultural council and community federation committee.
I'm Ed Montner. I live at 11 South Street, Southern Avenue, Broadway. And I was actually born here, so I've been here 62 years. And I did a small vacation to work for international for about 30 years.
I'm Janet Woodward. And I've lived in Berlin as long as I've been married to Tim Wheeler, which is 35 years or so. And I'm on the Historical Commission.
And then, way back.
Paul Wheeler. Lived in town my whole life. I have, I live up on Highland Street, and also have property down at South Street. And that's it.
I'm Alan Jewell, Colorado. I live at 20 Dorhut Street. I newly got here within the last year and a half, but I was born here.
And we'll go a couple of years.
Kate Hendrick. I live at 39 Walnut Street. I'm not going to date myself, but I grew up in, been raised in Berlin.
I realized after I started this conversation. Yeah. My apologies.
Walter Bigford, Duke Grove, South Street. My folks moved here in 1944.
Excellent. And McCray?
Anne McCall. I live on Walnut Street, and we've been here for 35 years. And I have to say, being on Walnut Street, there isn't a day that hasn't gone by that I don't have a deep appreciation for this beautiful town and the town center that we could, could walk to the library, walk here, took my kids to school. It's a great place.
That's amazing. I just got the chills.
Rob McKay, her other half. But I've been here 36 years. I don't know why she's going.
Caleb Kussmaul. I've been here since April. And I live on West Street.
It's nice to meet you. Mary McKell, who lives at 119 Harbor Street. I've been here 35 years.
Paul McKell, 119 Paris Street. I've been here 50 years among the board of health and also involved in 19 Carter.
And back.
Patrick Perry, 24 by Pleasant Street. We've been here about 32 years.
32?
32.
Mary Reddington, 35 Pleasant Street. 32 years. 32. Exactly. 32 years ago today.
Abby Dewitt. I live up on Highland Street, and I've lived here for 28 years.
I'm Jenna Muppin. I'm at 20 Word, and we've been here almost three years.
Laurie Kukla, 24 Woodward. And we've been here two years.
Jared Kukla, 24 Woodward.
Tom Morgan. I've been here for 62 years. I grew up on Highland Street, and then I married a gentleman from the center of town, and now I live in the center of town.
Hey.
Jane Sawyer, 7 and Central Street. And I've been here 76 plus years.
Thank you for coming.
Jim McNichol, 113 Boylston. He's been here about 12, 12 years. And I'm on the boards of church.
Mike Sawyer. I live on Derby Road. I've been here a couple of years.
James Holyoke. I've been here off and on for 41 years, and 11 Turner Road.
Is that it? Sally Schaefer. We live at, I live at 19 Highland Street, and I think we're in 28, almost 29. Is that, is that it? Okay. Thank you so much for that. Okay. So, so Emily?
Oh, and I'm Emily Lovitz. I live in Worcester, but I work for the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, so I'll be helping out tonight.
Would you like to introduce yourself?
They know you.
And you're a B.C. Boyd fan, so you're good in my book.
We also have some people online.
Yeah, if they can, if we can hear them.
Yeah, if anyone on remote wants to introduce themselves.
I think there's seven or eight guests online. Okay. Sorry. As long as they can hear us, right? Yeah. Okay. So my name is Carrie Sol. As Tim said, I'm a project manager at CMRPC. That is the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, and I'm a regional planner by education and an economic development planner by trade. I've been at the agency for about five years, almost five years. And we are one of 13 local planning agencies across the Commonwealth. Our agency has two divisions, so we have transportation and community planning. We provide support to 40 communities in southern Worcester County and have them here. And our staff, we assist our member communities with land use and transportation planning, economic development, regional collaboration, coordination, public engagement, and other technical issues and a whole host of other local and regional planning issues. And as you can see by the map here, our region is quite diverse geographically. We have the big city of Worcester and the boroughs who, like Berlin, border 495. We have communities that border the Connecticut line in the Brookfields to the west and the Wachusett area up north. And I say this, I show you this because each of our towns are completely different from one another. They have different roadway access, school systems, municipal capacity. They have different water sewer lines and structures. Their public safety situations are different, and they have different needs when it comes to planning. And I'll touch a little bit more on that later. But one thing we do all have in common is that we do live in the same state. So our job is to follow mass smart growth principles as closely as possible. So those are to advance equity, to make efficient decisions, to protect land and ecosystems, to use natural resources wisely, to expand housing opportunities when possible, to provide transportation choice, to increase job and business opportunities, to promote clean energy, to plan regional and consensual development with mixed use. The mass growth, smart, the mass smart growth principles led to the push of the Village Center studies in 2018 and 2019. And our job was to find out which of our communities wanted to take a closer look at their town centers to see where improvements, if any, could be made. This was an opportunity to evaluate traffic flow, to monitor pedestrian safety, to increase small business opportunities, and do zoning overviews where needed. We were thrilled, actually, when the town of Berlin reached out. The board of selectmen in their letter of support pointed out that one of the master plan goals was to further study our economic development as a community with specific focus on the Berlin Center Village. They hadn't, they had seen the renovations of this beautiful building and 19 Carter as the first step in a process. So the timeline, a timeline of helps project kind of evolved, like Tim hinted on, it's been going on for quite a while. But the economic development plan was created in 2015, and the Village Center Plan application was submitted in 2019 in the summer. The award was made in the winter of 2019. So the data was pulled, the preliminary research was done over the winter of 2020, and we all know what happened in the spring of 2020. So COVID not only put a kink in our planning process, but it also put a halt in our community engagement planning portion. So this project, you know, this project was special. Obviously, like you said, Berlin Center is very special, and we felt like it warranted more of a conversation than just a, just like a survey. So the community feedback is not only what planning processes are made of, but it's our intention and that of the select board in mid-2018 to further study the economic development as a community. So we identified priority parcels and created the Berlin Center Draft. We submitted it last year, and we're here tonight to have an open discussion with the stakeholders who live and work and care about the center. We will, like Tim mentioned, we will have another meeting once all the import, all the information is imported and input into the draft. The Berlin Center project is different from all of the other village project centers that we worked on. The others, the other communities, like I tried to explain, they're all completely different, but the other communities need economic development assistance, where Berlin has worked hard, really hard, to have a strong economic base so that the residents don't carry all the tax burden like many of our other communities. Berlin was more looking to have healthy conversations about scenario planning, what, what about this, or what if this happened, what if that happened? And is there potentially room for more mom and pop shops? What can we do to make Berlin more walkable or livable for the current residents? They weren't trying to bring in any outside companies or for commercial tax base or increase traffic because you don't have that issue. There weren't any large scale housing in the downtown because clearly that's not necessary. The request from Berlin was simple and it was smart. It was, how do you enhance Berlin's identity by developing its local business districts and creating economic climate that enhances the viability of working lands and conserved natural lands? This intent, this, the intent from very early on was not to completely build out the center. It was actually the opposite. It was to be as proactive as possible so that you never have to be reactive, ever. So this study analyzes community data and impacts of COVID-19. It identifies priority parcels, as you'll see on the next slide. It reviews the zoning because you get what you zone for. It provides case studies for place making opportunities, which really meant a lot over the COVID-19 pandemic. It strategizes ways to accommodate pedestrian access, which also was important during COVID and now. And it suggests best practices to further support the business community. So the study consists, consisted of a 0.3 mile radius from the church center, larger than a typical village center, but the way the roads connect and with this very small population, we really wanted to include as many stakeholders as possible. So here are the priority parcels in the study area. These buildings were chosen because they held community or cultural significance. And some of the data that we pulled from the plan, the study, you know, some of the housing and population background for the community. You are 3,312 strong with 1,291 households. The median age is 49, 12.9 square miles. 81% of your homes are single family, and the median sale price is $565,000. Berlin is very heavy in the strengths department. In fact, I file it as a hidden gem. You've played the commercial development card very well while being able to retain your natural resources. A majority of your labor force works in town or nearby. A strong school system followed by high educational attainment levels, consistently low unemployment. You're at the top of your current planning documents, strong planning board. You've met your 10% affordable house mandate. In fact, you've crushed it, 17% on the SHI. Your affordable housing options not only attract you on professionals, but allow long time residents to remain in the community instead of having to relocate or move to entirely new areas. Your strengths are mixed with opportunities. That would be, that would be the Town Adopting Community Preservation Act in 2019, 2019. Your CPA can be spent towards open space, durable resources, recreation land, or community housing. Berlin also became a designated green communities town, uh, air, green community, community? Community? Being awarded $66,000 to fund conservation measures like LED lighting and certified municipal buildings. Berlin adopted both Tier One and Tier Two of the Complete Streets Program, which ultimately increases walkability and pedestrian safety. And during the open plan, open space planning survey, residents indicated that they really would like further development of sidewalks and bike trails. And there's many exciting endeavors happening in Berlin today concurrently. The Route 12, Route 62 corridor study is being completed. An assessment of all culverts in Berlin was completed, and because I'm lucky enough to live close by, I actually got called in to do a culvert assessment when one of our colleagues fell on my ankle. And to this day, it was one of the most exciting parts of my job. The housing production plan is being updated, and we have some, we've had some really great healthy conversations right here in this room. These, there's continued efforts to update historical buildings in the Berlin Center, along with a lot of grant writing underway for preservation. All commendable efforts being done by volunteers in your community. Okay, last slide. So what are the future steps? I guess a lot of that depends on how our conversation goes following this, but the culvert assessment and the traffic studies could potentially lead to a chip project for Route 62. There could be another attempt at the Safe Routes for School application that was submitted in 2019 but not approved, which would assist with the signs and lines for the school downtown, updating signage and helping with road crossings for safety for students. There are conversations about a cultural corridor along Route 62 that could potentially be taken up again. There was a feasibility study done by Mass DOT regarding the leg of the Mass Central Rail Trail that comes through Berlin, and a meeting in the works to discuss how the Aqueduct Trail could potentially connect into Berlin from North Berlin or West Berlin. All topics that I'm very happy to discuss and hear feedback on tonight. And, all right, second to the last slide. This is, this is the very last slide. So thank you for allowing me to share all of this with you. I actually have the Village Plan historian map I didn't pull up. But I, we have copies of the story map, but I can also pull it up after this. But at this point, I think I would like to open up some to feedback on your thoughts of the slides. Actually, first, did anybody read the plan? Did anybody have a chance to go through it? Okay. I'm happy to start the discussion. Is there anything I can offer? Has, is there an offer? Did I miss anything, I guess, on the slide?
No, I mean, what you don't understand about Berlin, if you've lived here all your life for a long time, is that when you compare some of the things that we have done as a small town to a lot of other small towns, we're quite exceptional. And we don't often appreciate that. But working with the commission now for 40 years I've been involved, I'm just always impressed with how they recognize what we have managed to do. And I think often you'll say, without a town administrator until recently, it's basically been done by volunteers. And they've often said to me, you need to make sure people in Berlin understand that you're doing a good job. So, you know, not, that doesn't mean there isn't more to be done, and that's, you know, what we hope to accomplish, you know, with meetings like this. So, you know, this, we need to stay ahead of the ball and be proactive rather than reactive. That's our difference.
Yes. Could you just dive more down into the detail versus the high level? Like over the next year or two, what are your priorities as far as, you had, you had every board, sidewalks, the complete streets, you, we've done a study, traffic study. So how does that break down? Does Woodward become a one-way? How are you going to build outside walks? It would just be helpful to get the nitty-gritty. Sure. So the Complete Streets Program is a three-phase program. So Tier One is accepting the policy, which the town has done. Phase Two is a very in-depth walk audit that's done, where they literally walk all through town. They go through intersections, they test it for safety, they test it for accessibility, and then they, they monitor and write down every single intersection that they come across, every sidewalk. And then the town is given a prioritization list, and they can, the town's given a list and they can prioritize. And then, once they have their prioritization list accomplished, they can apply to the state for phase three, which is a $400,000 grant application, which will help them work on their priority projects. So that tier two has already happened?
Who is the they? So that was police, fire, town administrators, planning board, highway.
And it's more intersections than traffic flow. It's, it's more for accessibility and safety than which way the traffic travels.
Excuse me. So it's townspeople, town officials, police, fire, and so forth that is the they? Okay. And that was a number of years ago, because, I mean, Tom, Tom Gallin was here, Keith, and, yeah, so, and we, so it was probably 18 maybe?
Yeah. And the prioritization list is public. It's a public document, and it's actually in, it's embedded in the plan, so it's accessible to anybody who's, who is interested in seeing the walk audit. And it's actually something that you can apply for year after year.
Yeah. The Traffic Safety Advisory Committee has begun to review the prioritization plan. And, I mean, a significant amount of it is sidewalks. That was the, the walkability was the issue. And like Carrie said, we're eligible now to apply. Lots of times you need to have some amount of engineering and planning done in order to apply. And I think the town assumes, I think the selectmen talked about this, that we might very well use ARCA money to stimulate some of those applications because, you know, we need to just finalize some of that. So we reached out to the town of Brookfield because they're similar in size. They did something with their downtown with sidewalks, and their DPW head is going to reach out to us and work with one of their selectmen to talk about the strategy they use so we can not have to reinvent the wheel.
So sidewalks on Woodward, right? Would that?
Well, that's the thing. I mean, we need to get, what do people want to do? Do you want sidewalks in the center of town? Do you, where would you like to see them? You know, that's why.
That's what we're just trying to understand.
Well, I mean, there was an evaluation of the sidewalks in existence, and the plan shows which ones were deficient in terms of ADA, which ones complied, which ones were in good shape. And the notion was to get people initially from the school to the library to the town offices to, you know, the church to the bank, to create this network here. But then, over time, expand that. And indeed, we talked about going all the way to North Brook One and Two, maybe going all the way to South Berlin so you can get to River Bridge. You know, connect, connectivity is really our objective. So if you think about the center, you know, the sidewalks in Cardville are for it. So, you know, how do you accomplish adding sidewalks to Cardville, keeping two-way traffic, and having people not be able to park in their yard because they don't have a parking place in their yard? So, you know, how do we accomplish that? And what do you do with Wooded Avenue, for instance? And, you know, do you, do you try to put a sidewalk that goes from 19 Carter to the Ballard House, you know, and connect across to the graveyard and then to the school? So I don't, you know, I don't, what do people think?
Why wouldn't have our town workers here to discuss how plowing, sanding, how all this is going to affect the center of town? I understand that you can have all of this for everybody, to have walking ability, to be able to connect in different areas, but the people who have to work through the winter and through the normal everyday, and your directions of traffic, and people walking in certain ways, and parking, it... I understand that you can have all of this for everybody, to have walking ability, to be able to connect in different areas. But the people who have to work through the winter and through the normal everyday and your directions of traffic and people walking in certain ways and parking, it doesn't make sense. How do you have a snowplow going down a small street and have them expect to go ahead and put snow in certain areas and not in other areas? It's not making much sense to me. I'm just trying to understand this part of this whole thing.
That's a perfect example of feedback that we will need to our second meeting and get answers for. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
So any other comments about the complete streets or the walkability downtown or, not downtown, but in the center? Are there any spots that come to mind that you think specifically need attention?
Pleasant Street and South Street.
Pleasant Street and South Street?
How about going up Highland as well? You have a whole $350,000 community up there with a lot of people. I think how fortunate I've been to be able to walk this town. I walk all the time. I agree, Cardville, the sidewalks are horrendous. You can't even walk on them anymore, so it puts you in the street. But think of how many more people could have access to town if we had gone, if they go up a little bit higher.
But I don't live up there anymore.
I was going to add that I would love to see sidewalks on Woodard and the ones on Highland and Grove. Like, I have a tandem stroll with my two kids and I have to walk on the street because the wheels can't get through all of them. And then having maybe a sidewalk that connects, you know, across the, where the many heads thru shop is, then to Pleasant Street. Because I know that's like a beautiful walk, but it's just too dangerous.
One of the complete street options they have is to shrink the crosswalk a little bit too for considering the length of crossings so they can build out for safety and more for older and aging adults so it's easier to cross the street.
And you had also mentioned safety. I always knew I'd be able to walk through town. And then I would cross from the cemetery, then go down. There was a pond, frogs, and get to the school, which is great if you have kids at school or whatever. And that cross, what you cross now, it's really, it's just so dangerous there. It's scary. Because even if they do stop, then you worry that the car behind them isn't going to stop.
We've walked through this area several times at different times of day when we were working on the plan. And I do remember that specifically.
And was there any consideration of those crosswalks that are flashing constantly now? Which I think after three days, if you commute, you stop seeing. Changing them to like a push button where they only light up when people walk?
Those are a response to the shared streets project.
We had a push button that was supposed to work for our fire trucks. And that system has not worked since the second time they pushed the button. And we're going to put in walk push buttons? That's going to really change the center of town? Why don't we try to take care of the one that needs to work the most by the fire department before we start putting crosswalk push buttons? I think that's something that needs to be looked at. I went ahead and, before all of this was going, the kids that I had in our neighborhood were trying to cross the streets. I went down to the selectmen's office and we ended up having a pedestrian plastic thing put in the center of the road. Cars did still not stop for the kids. And then it became a hazard in the wintertime because it had to be moved, so people still didn't stop. Then they went into all the light systems that everybody's talking about. And then the light system is on maybe 10 times and then it's not. So how do you expect to keep something going all the time when you can't even keep one thing going? That's what I'm trying to understand the most.
This is a signal of the fire trucks? Can you signal from the station or when they're coming out?
What, Rob, can you clarify what you're talking about? I think some of us are lost.
Well, right here in the center of town, when you come from the general store, you cross the street to the general store, you go by the church, or you come here by where the cemetery is, the old cemetery. The kids have bus stops. They have it at the center of town. Then they have it again at where the old cemetery is. And the kids would get off the buses. And the cars would still keep going. So then we got to sign the said stop for pedestrians. They still didn't stop. They didn't even stop at school bus stops. Then, after that, we started going ahead and getting signs that said, "Stop." People don't stop. And then we went ahead and put the stoplight in that's right down nearby going into South Street, Linden Street, right in there. That has not worked. I can tell you a month after it was pushed, it still hasn't worked. And we paid for that.
So this is not a traffic study? It's a pedestrian study?
It's a crosswalk.
Because the problem is traffic.
Traffic speed, traffic...
Well, highly common, we have so much traffic now. You can't pull out in a car in front of the general store or even merging here in the morning, never mind take a left. So, I mean, sidewalks are great, especially with all that traffic. But is there a plan for another traffic study? Or is that going to also be incorporated?
I think the traffic study is incorporated in the corridor study. So the findings from that should have some sort of influence.
Because there's the intersection of Pleasant South, many accidents. There's the, there's Five Corners up, which is ridiculous.
So the corridor study that Centromass has been working on looks at 62 from the Houston line to the Hudson line. And it identifies three key components. Gates Park Road and 62, the Five Corners, and the center. And it looks at those. And the solutions that we probably try to pursue would be the TIP, which Carrie mentioned, the Transportation Improvement Program, which takes federal dollars that come to the state and then the different traffic districts. And the MPP, MMPPO.
CMPO.
CM. Which is a regional body that reviews TIP proposals and then makes decisions about how those federal dollars are spent. And we've been advised that Berlin's application for transportation improvement funds for the Five Corners probably would be looked at favorably because we haven't been on the TIP before. And it's a fairly complex issue. And it isn't as dangerous as some intersections within the region, but it's dangerous. So that's the way we thought we probably would deal with that. Now, the TIP is on a five-year schedule. They keep adding projects two or five years out. So it's a ways off. But again, there'd have to be some, perhaps some ARPA money that would help with some of the initial engineering. And then we put an application together and then we go to the TIP. So that's what the Select Board and the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee are probably going to look at. In the center, it seemed as though the complete streets opportunities gave us the most bang for the buck. And so we'd probably look at ways in which we could use ARPA money to stimulate the application and deal with some of the issues. In terms of trap, the number of cars that follow Route 62 on a daily basis, you know, 10,000, there's few ways to reduce that number. So what you do is you try to find traffic calming opportunities and other events like that. But it's, you know, traffic is a problem that is probably insurmountable in a number of ways. You know, we're not going to, we're not going to reduce the traffic in Bolton on 117, so it's going to come through here, unfortunately.
You know, when I first got my license, years and years ago, you were, you had the fear of God driving through Berlin. You couldn't drive for 25 miles an hour because you were going to get pulled over. That was the problem. So you pulled over everybody I've ever met in my life. So you just kind of crawled through Berlin.
It is bad.
It's so bad.
So, kind of second way to sum it up, with some strong traffic, one of the things in the plan online said, "Consider working with the Commonwealth to designate Route 62 as senior byways. Senior byways can draw tourists and help protect the town's rural character." Now, we're all talking about how much traffic we have and the ubiquity of GPS. I think we all could probably agree as many words people are driving through Berlin to get to other, but we don't have a heck of a lot in our town center. So how would we gain the Commonwealth to make Route 62 a senior byway? Help us. That seems like, that would get people going to Hudson or to Clinton and then they're going to drive through, like, I mean, it might be great for the state, it might be great for other towns for 62 to have that, but that just seems like going in the wrong direction for anything that's going to help us in Berlin. I don't think encouraging more traffic, you know, in my opinion, has a few more customers at the general store. I don't think it's going to really impact the overall town center in a way that is going to be helpful.
Valuable feedback. This is the kind of information that we need. Can I ask about the general store? How nice, how the traffic flow is coming in and out of the general store, parking?
Can they park a lot?
Yeah.
Take your life in your own hands. I've seen many people, they're unable to cross the street because traffic just won't stop.
Yeah, I started working, Fred, I used to manage a store in Concord. I don't have a car anymore, so I'm walking down the street. And I get when like the first car doesn't stop, you know, they may not see me in time. But when it's like three or four, like, sometimes I'm just really tempted to go out on the street anyway and like, maybe I can get a settlement, you know? I already lost my life once, so, you know, so, but yeah, it is, it is different. People don't seem to understand that pedestrians have to ride and play. And, yeah, so, it is challenging for us.
And it shows, you know, the police station actually, for anybody who hasn't, mostly has, the police station is here in the building. So there was always a cruiser in front of this town hall. So when you're going to the center of town, whether there was somebody in or not, you really didn't know. So it makes police presence make a huge difference in the way people behave in a public building.
And when there's one at Five Corners, same thing.
We grew up with the police cruisers in town. And there was control of the traffic. And I requested it 100 times when the kids are getting off the school bus. We have enough police officers.
We're adding that to the list.
Even if there's nobody in the cruiser, if the cruiser is sitting there.
It's just getting dark up the window.
If there's a guy in there, one day, one day, there are six days a week. If they're sitting at the police station anyways.
I agree.
Carrie, Mary Porter, I'm new here. I've only been in town 25 years, so I prefer it to somebody who's walls and somebody who's other people. But I've lived in the center. And I've spent a lot of time in 19 Carter. I've served on the finance committee in town and then liaisoned to the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee. So, I just want, I'm listening to people talk here and I have, I've been listening to a lot of different participants in all of this. I want to give a shout out to our town employees because in certain areas, people are under-resourced or under-resourced in the police department right now. There isn't an officer to put in a cruiser to calm traffic. And if you turn the camera off and tell a little secret, which is, which is, when there's an accident, like on the weekend of 495, and everybody's using GPS to cut through and avoid the 290 for 90 interchange? It's possible that there might be an empty cruiser parked in a particularly useful place like Pleasant Street so that it gets picked up on waves and tells the GPS people, "Slow down." There's going to be radar stuff, right? But we don't have an officer to put in, or we can put a cruiser in. I'm not saying that goes on, I'm just saying that could happen in places like Berlin. So, so I do want to say that the town employees have done really well with that. From the finance committee's standpoint, we're always trying to keep your taxes reasonable, keep them in the low level, and do all of that. So we put a lot of pressure on the town departments not to spend. And so this woman over here was talking about with the blinking signs. Mary said, "Two, you buy it three times, you don't see it anymore." Well, we had a certain amount of funds available when those were installed. Chief Gallant was working on it at the time. We didn't have the funds to put in a push button. Best we could pay for were those blinking signs. And so everybody collectively was thinking about, what do we need in Berlin, in the town center, in our business district? Got to keep in mind that we're not to pay for it. You know, if you want it, get ready to pay for it because it doesn't come free. That's a non-paid message on your finance committee. Unauthorized, besides, I'm just talking, this is new talk. And I think the signal, what I've seen in the 25 years is really discouraging with respect to that area around 62. I mean, we have this lovely New England town center. And I think that's why we're all here. We choose to live in these towns, these kinds of places. And the pressure on 62 started on the Clinton developments, the residential developments under the border Clinton would put in.
Oh, Woodlands. Woodlands.
Whatever.
And Woodlands.
Woodlands, thank you. Why don't you guys know? I don't know, I'm not, I'm not saying it. Right. But that's when the traffic got crazy on 62. Whenever the GPSs became common, that got even crazier. And the GPSs brought it to Highland Street, to Carter Street, to Pleasant Street, and so on. And so we have in town center a traffic issue number one. So as we look at planning and what to do to resolve that, what Tim called "traffic calming" has to be at the top of the list. That's ahead of sidewalks, that's ahead of everything else. And I know that we have to look to the state because 62 is under the state's jurisdiction, right? So I think realistically, we want to do everything we can to get those kinds of projects on the top. And then, secondly, I think the sidewalks are really important. Northbrook Village needs to be connected to town center. Obviously, the school, the elementary school needs to be connected to the town center, which includes our friends at the general store, the church, this building, 19 Carter, the library, all of that area, sidewalks. But as I understand, the complete street initiative that we signed up to, right, Tom, you need to... There's certain design criteria. Well, if you look at Carter Street and Highland Street, Woodard Ave., less so Woodard Ave., these streets in the Cardville area, they can't support that. They got to be one-way. I don't see any other way to do it, other than taking down people's houses to be able to fit in proper pedestrian sidewalks, bicycle lane, a length of cars.
Parking.
And, well, parking, yeah, because these homes were built when we had horses. So it was often a carriage house in the back or a shed in the back for the horse and the carriage. But, so people do have to park on the street. Any overflow parking goes on the street, certainly my house. I got two little slots and a little driveway. So parking will continue to be an issue in the center of town. And I really think, I know there's people that don't want to see one-way streets, but I don't think you can provide pedestrian pathways without making those areas one-way. And that has a further benefit of discouraging some of the GPS kind of cut-through that's trying to get off of 117, at least for this part of town center. And so I think that the consideration of certain town roads going to be one-way streets to accommodate also a bicycle lane, which, I'm a cyclist, and I'll get to that in a minute. So that's kind of why I came tonight was to say those things. And yeah, it would be nice to run a sidewalk up Highland. But if you're going to do that, you better think about looking at one-way up to, I can't even say the name, it annoys me so much.
Carter Street?
No. The Cardinals. Highland, yeah, Highland actually, yeah.
The 109th, 109th.
And then in the overall plan, every residential development that's permitted in the town, aside from what we're trying to do on Port House, just adds to this problem. And to Mary's marvelous point, we're not a destination. That traffic's not coming here to stop and spend money on business in town. They're just, they're all like a bat out of hell. So we have a lot of constraints that I can see. But I think if we're taking in that order and, you know, one-way streets are inconvenient, but I really see that as an essential solution when you have these older... essential solution, when you have these older homes that are clustered right on the street. And it's just not safe. And I'm still pretty agile, but it's not safe. I make eye contact on 62 before I cross, on foot or on bicycle. And then let me get to the bicycle piece, because I'm looking at, I don't know if this is, I'm looking at, you picked this up in the back, this is.
Yeah, that's that, yeah.
So I'm looking at page 12, 2021 Mass Central Rail Trail Report, and it's proposing running from Berlin to what I think is beyond 195, out here on 62. And somehow, this report was done without ever coming to us in Berlin, who spent two-plus years working on a study of the section of that rail, proposed rail trail here in Berlin. We had an extensive report that was, this was commissioned by the select board, that report is on our website in Berlin, it was a little bit hidden, I don't know if it's gotten picked up yet, I asked them to make it a little more visible. Mary McHale did a huge amount of research, I chaired that committee. Nobody talked to us.
For the Mass CMT, these studies?
Exactly. Whatever this 2001 Mass Central Rail Trail Report, nobody talked to us.
That was D O T.
Yeah, I actually have that required part of the meeting.
Yeah, and you're linked in on, in the those study, where you have linked here.
It's on that one, okay.
It's on ours, in Central Masses, yeah, we've been in there with it all along, but.
I have the three pages here, actually, that contains that, which you have here, I worked on, just, it should have been a public process, though.
Yeah, but I don't, I think D O T, maybe because we're at the end of the line, I mean, you don't remember participating while they're with anything.
I don't, yeah, I don't think they did a public hearing in town.
No, this is not the, well, the conservation, yeah, the town and the select board knew that this report was done, and it wasn't, apparently wasn't shared with the people that wrote the lead report. But we did not, we did not recommend development of that section of rail for a lot of reasons, including five corners issues by Sorry Book Road, a lot of reasons. So, and cost.
Did you take cost?
Cost, yeah, to the town, not just cost overall, but to the town, directly to the town. So, that comment, I'd like to go back into this planning process, because I think that we did an awful lot of work, we talked to the experts, we talked to the head guy at DCR, we walked to parts of the trail in West End and so on, talked to all those people. So, it's disappointing that it's not part of evidently, because I'm completely unaware that anybody looked at our work.
Yeah, so what we're saying, we're familiar with it.
Yeah.
And D O T wasn't. The point now is that, as Carrie mentioned earlier on, Westboro and Northboro were wanting to have a conversation with us about the aqueduct. The East Coast Greenway Alliance uses Berlin as a corridor, using 62, which is crazy. And the, everything, the Asabett River Trail through Solon Pond Halls complex and Donalds Boulevard is being talked about in their most recent report, trying to link up to River Bridge. And we've got this Mass Central Rail Trails study that tries to identify ways to connect with the Hudson Trails and everything that's on the other side of Clinton, on the Wachusett Trails, so we need to participate in that conversation, and I think that this stimulus is gonna be through Central Masses outreach to us when we start to talk to Northboro and Westboro, because you've been looking at trails in general, and the networks are there, and the possibilities are endless, but, you know, so that's another chapter, I think.
Yeah, and I do think there's alternative routes that have been discussed.
Yeah.
Because of the report that was done, I think they're looking for, yeah, I think that's what's happening right now.
One of our unexplored recommendations was to take a southern route that could eventually connect you up with the trail through Hudson, I always forget the name.
Asabett River.
Asabett, yeah, Asabett River Trail, if you could connect the south end near, into the aqueduct, you could bring an app, the aqueduct comes out very close to Five Corners, you straighten out Five Corners, you can then connect to Clinton and the Massachusetts Central Rail Trail, right? There's, you know, there's other ways to connect that make more sense, using existing corridors that are better suited for this kind of activity.
Exactly, I think there was, like, they were too close to people's property, and there was other issues that came up, so I do believe they're looking at alternative routes.
Yeah, with respect to what we call the wayside branch, Berlin had the highest housing density along that section of many of the towns.
Oh.
More houses, yeah. And so that would be part of the cost of town, because you would need some kind of privacy screen if you were gonna do that.
Yeah.
And other specifications. The final thing I want to say about the bicycling, I as a cyclist would very much like to use Route 62, but certainly not in the condition it's in. So I've ridden and really enjoyed the Wachusett Reservoir Circle, okay? And going back to the complete streets, you know, it's not marked that this is a bike lane or anything, but the shoulders are wide and in good condition in both directions, as you do, and it's almost a 20-mile loop. And I think, I know from the cycling clubs in around Boston, they come out a lot, they'll ride up Wachusett Mountain. So it'd be really nice through the entire Route 62 to develop shoulders that would support bicycle traffic, because then people who commute, as well as the, you know, the recreation of more high-end cycles will use it. It's a nice, you know, getting back to the scenic high, right, that is a nice, this section is, and people ride it when they're just out of their minds. It is so dangerous, I mean, the edge of the pavement just drops right off, so.
Are you suggesting an extended shoulder in lieu of a marked bike lane?
If that's what works for the state and for us, I'd say sure, because it does work. I mean, as long as you have a line mark, so the car knows they don't belong.
Right.
So you'd have to do line on 62? Because you'd need a back. Well, visualize instead of me along Wachusett Reservoir, that's what you need. If you can visualize that, so.
Line on 62?
Yeah. But you're gonna need to do that pedestrian areas, eastern town center, I think. Yeah, so you might, yeah. I think I've said a lot, I need to sit down and listen.
Thank you, Carrie.
In connection with what you were saying about Route 62, and your sidewalk comment, I really think that should be a priority, literally, a sidewalk up 62 all the way through the town. And I say that because if you're walking in Berlin and walking various streets and so forth, sooner or later, you end up with having to use at least part of 62 to connect with some other place you want to go. And it's not safe to walk anywhere on Route 62 unless there is already a sidewalk there. And therefore, it seems to me we need a sidewalk the whole length of 62, however it can be accomplished, at least on one side of the street, so that there is a way to use 62 as a way to get to the other streets or the other places that perhaps save them from walk in their current state. I think that's an essential thing for those of us that like to go on walk.
Do you think that was a feedback on the corridor study, for that at least on one side?
No. Carrie, one of the things I think, I mean, I have some planning background, and I think one of the things that maybe you could talk about, I haven't looked in detail at the plan, I skimmed through it, but what your proposals are, or the visions, that, one of the things that would help accomplish both things that people are talking about, is the sense of the arrival to the village center. I mean, there's nothing as you come down, for years back when Bruce Bartlett was still here with the house, and, where the crushed greenhouse is there on 62, we talked about, then talking to selectmen, trying to extend the reduced speed zone to back around at that point, you know, from coming from the east entrance. And then if you have signage and things that started to indicate that you are entering a village area, which, part of the thing with sidewalks is, as you come into that area, you reduce the amount of pavement space, and you have to be careful about what you wish for when you add those shoulders to 62 and that, because that's just going to easily increase speed in the other zone. I mean, I know they're taking their lights in their hands, but they're, the bikers are helping you out in part by forcing people to slow down for some of the time, but if we could.
That's a hell of a stop sign.
Yeah, right, right. Well, they got those little flashing red lights, come on. Yeah, thank you, Mary. You know, from St. Joe's starting, you know, whether it's, whether it's the change of signage for street signs in the area, the change of street lights to something different, the definition of the sides of the road that ties in with the sidewalks, all of that would help create the sense of, oh, I'm in a village, I'm not just on this rural highway with some houses scattered along here.
It's great.
That goes a long ways. And I'm not sure what the plan suggests for that, and I was wondering if you were gonna talk more about what things you've proposed to the center of town, is there proposals in here for like, how do we use the town's excess property with your fire station and those things, how do we tie that in to make the center more of a destination? Which, we also need more parking, because 19 Carter and 1870 and First Parish experienced that, you know, if you try to do something, uh-oh, uh-oh. How do we tie those in and anchor things together, so?
Yeah, we had actually done our, the initial phase of the project, we did, like I said, we did some walking tours, and we actually got inside both of those buildings to check them out and kind of evaluate, there's, you know, what their condition, their location, there's a site distance issue, obviously it used to be a fire station and a, or two, fire station and a garage, correct?
Fire station and a rescue bus, not a garage.
Okay, that's what I thought. I was gonna say two fire stations, that didn't make sense. There was discussion about potentially, just off the top of my head, some of the conversations that came up were potentially using that as an access from the rear, where the fire station is coming through, using that as an access, because coming around the corner is tough where they are.
That was the original plan.
What's that?
That was the original plan, the expansion was done.
Yeah, but there's, it's storage right now, if I understand correctly, but that can be relocated. And there's also, that's, these are also conversations that can be had with the stakeholders that live in the area, of what you would like to see as a town or property. There was also mention of some signage in the plan for that specific, that, just for that specific case coming in and out of Berlin Center, that would have to be obviously agreed on by the community, but there's different, like, grant opportunities for signage like that, weight binding, placemaking, it's under the placemaking section.
I was just saying, you know, the town offices, the beautiful town offices could be great overflow parking for the center of town, it's not that far, if the safety of the sidewalks were fixed, I mean, I think people would be, I mean, it's not that far to walk.
And even the school, the town field, I mean, these venues you're talking about, 19 Carter, this, they're not that big.
No.
You can't have hundreds of, you could, but, I mean, hundreds of cars for these functions. There is overflow parking, there's parking here, there is on-street parking, there's the town offices, the school isn't too far, but the venues aren't huge.
Right, and some of that is just behavior, right? Educating people, you know, you have an event at 19 Carter, and there's gonna be overflow and just asking people that are more, you know, physically able to park farther away, to leave the spots of town for people that need better accessibility would be reasonable.
And share parking.
Everybody's talking about all these different things, but no one's talking about, where are you gonna take the land to take a sidewalk in the town roads, through the, on 62? You have 62, which is a road, it's only so wide, and you wanna add sidewalks, you got two-way traffic coming, 62 is the main road, how in the world are you gonna change the width of that? You're gonna have to take domain, other people's land, do all of this?
Well, there's, well, we're not saying that's what's happening, but there is a process that the Mass CMT goes through, and they have a conversation with every single property owner, and they come up with a solution. If it's feasible, if it's not feasible, then the property owner is not gonna be taken, it's a property owner's decision.
Well, they could take eminent domain, but it's typically like.
They went down there, isn't it?
You may not need to go without saying, but I think we need to be aware that we all need to have in mind an attitude adjustment. Berlin is not Berlin as it used to be 20 or 30 years ago. I've lived on 62 for 50 years, and I'd like to roll back the clock relative to the traffic that I experienced at my house. Not gonna happen, and development's gonna continue around us. And if we're not prepared to make some hard choices, and some of them aren't gonna be pleasant, but we can't control the traffic, the volume of traffic, we can't control. What we can do is work on mitigating the effect, the negative effects of it, and there're gonna have to be a lot of compromises made down the road to accomplish that, because otherwise you're still taking this big funnel, and you're taking 10,000-plus cars, and in another couple of years, it's gonna be as tall as 13,000, trying to funnel it down. And we can't really be looking at this like, what's gonna work tomorrow or next year if we do it? What's sustainable to deal with increasing growth? Now hopefully, I mean, I consider Clinton to be pretty much overdeveloped, but it seems like they will always find a place to build another house or complex there. And where are gonna be the unfortunate beneficiary of that? And we just have to be aware of that moving forward.
Sad, unfortunately, as a Clinton resident, I concur.
So, I think some of what's a little thing, I've been, you're right, Paul, that we have to accept that things that we can't pull back, we can't get rid of the travel, but there are a few things in the report that seem to indicate more proactive efforts at development in the town center, which doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me. One of the latest reports was, you have to develop more senior housing in the village center to retain population. We have senior housing in town, and if in 40 years I need to move to someplace, I really don't need it to be that close to the center. Like, I can live moving from Carter Street to Pleasant Street, that, you know, and certainly with the median age being over 10 years what it is anyplace else, I don't think senior housing is really, you know, something we need to be looking at. And then, you know, the, one of the things I found in the report, kind of the most sort of reasons was, explore mandatory vac, vacancy registry and infra-entities and vacancy tax, question mark, as means of establish constructive dialogue of non-residential property owners. I'm not quite sure what we were defining as vacant properties, but in the list of the 67 properties that were identified as, I forgot what you, word was used, but.
Land?
Yeah, so like, one of them listed as a vacant property is where Jane has her garden, you know, in the center of town, which, are we tempted to have a vacant property that we wanna do something with? Because I, like, are we saying, because Jane has the garden there instead of a house that is something we're looking at? Like, there was a suggestion of putting a community garden there, which, well, it's already a garden, and we already have a community garden at Ritz's class, that we have a 99-year lease on, so, like, when I saw that, like, why the package is missing?
Yeah, I'm obsessed with Jane's garden.
Yeah, so like.
There's no way I would do anything to it.
But like, why that in the report?
I'll have to take another look at that.
Because I personally, the idea of like, any sort of, like, if someone has a building that's falling apart, and something could be done, but like, a vacancy registry or tax seems to be like a very, to me, an offensive idea. What, it's your property, if you wanna have a garden, if you wanna knock you out, you're paying taxes on it, so I don't think that's really any of our business, what is happening.
What feature do I have?
That in the report, I think the part about the registry tax, of course, the, of the stuff about coming, that's up for the, earlier in the. stuff about coming that up for the, the earlier in the report where it had the pictures of the properties with the building, that's where mentioned the idea of like the community garden where Jane has her garden, or there was something about the suggestion swapping this building into the library, what functions they had, it's also something rather bizarre to me as well.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking you might have an earlier draft.
Well, if, well, what I have, what I'm reading is what is on the planning board's page, so if, if I'm reading an earlier draft, that is the draft that your little car sent me to look.
So on page 17, like the Central Street Lot, it says undeveloped opportunity community use such as a pot or garden. And then also on that page, the first, the church mentions create a year-round market in the green space between the church driveway and Central Street. And it's just sort of like, that's an opportunity that nobody discussed with First Parish Church. So kind of wondering where these ideas, opportunities came up?
Would they just survey responses? Like somebody in the survey just said that?
Maybe, it's just the church owns that property, so.
But if you really want to start a, that kind of an activity, the town bought the chunk of 20, 38 acres or 34 acres down on South Street to do just those kinds of things on, and that's where we do them now.
And that's not even.
Not, not in the centers where we have big traffic problems at my.
Yeah, yeah. It's interesting, so that's, yeah. I think that's what you were talking about.
Yeah, yeah, but what you were looking at was that.
So all of the, all the, I should have probably known this if I didn't already, all of the conversation that we're having tonight will all be incorporated into this plan and drafted and sent out for public comment, so all of this feedback is essential.
Can you tell me more about that process? What exactly happened here, here, folks speak tonight, what happens from there?
After tonight?
Yeah. Whatever it is, ideas you've got, you've got a lot of great ideas.
Yeah, so it's all being recorded and televised, so we'll be able to gather all of the input that we've heard tonight. It'll go into what we have as a story map. That we can show you. It'll all be edited, edited out and your comments will be added in. Tonight's meeting will be included in the plan. And then we decided what we would do is have another meeting with the Berlin government staff and kind of get their feedback on the center after we get the stakeholders. That will also be included in the plan. And then the third section of it will be sent out to the public for all the residents to see and for public comment. So our hope is to have everything finalized by the end of March. And the fact that you all joined us tonight is a, is a huge start.
Not to jump topics, but what does zoning have to do with this?
What does zoning have to do with it?
Yeah, other proposed zoning changes?
Here, we'll go through. So I'll, I'll get to the zoning part, but I'll give you a walkthrough of the actual plan. So this is the line that we drew around the center from the church, the study area that I showed you on my slides. This is a list of all the previous planning efforts that have been done in Berlin over the past 10 years or so, and.
Can I do a new share?
Yeah.
It's not showing on your squared shared screen.
Oh, Emily's fixing it for you, sorry. Don't actually, did, did you see any comments on that?
Okay, you should be able to see it now online. Also, if anyone online has comments that they wanna voice or just type in the chat, I'll relay that to Karen.
Okay, so here's a list of all the previous planning efforts and links to them so you can take a walk through them. Oh, right here is the complete streets plan that we talked about. It's small, but you can click on it and you can see the prioritization plan. This is the Mass Central Rail Trail that Mary's talking about. This is what, some information on the community data that I kind of highlighted on my slides, but it goes very in-depth here. Employment data, commuting data, transportation, housing, some land use and ownership. Here are those priority parcels that we talked about. There's the empty lot that should be deleted. There's some zoning, some place making, this is more of the improving the pedestrian access that we talked about and then supporting small businesses. And here's some zoning, there was an analysis done and it depicts, depicts the different zoning that you have, the four different types of zoning that you have in your downtown. And some opportunities set to expand zoning, to allow multifamily housing, bring in housing downtown, encourage business development, concentrate development and lead to more walkable town center, reducing the dimension requirements in the commercial and commercial village district to allow for more concentrated development, clarify and reduce parking requirements to promote walkability and business development. Those were the only zoning mentions.
That's huge.
Yeah.
Changing, what is the process of that?
It would be a planning board, it would have to go through the planning board, through the town meeting process. It's a, it's a feat to change so.
And you need a two-thirds vote.
So for housing changes now, it's just a 50%?
Yeah.
50%?
For housing changes, yeah, the state just changed that, that law that you don't need a two-thirds vote, it's just a regular majority.
So this, what we have here are the four, place making and their strengths and opportunities listed for both, some of which I highlighted on my slides. These are just suggested from case studies across Massachusetts. There's a gazebo, this is a scenic byway that you mentioned, and townwide marketing, this is the signage that you mentioned. These are the crosswalks that we were talking about. Oh, God, sorry. This is some limited impact development. Here's the complete streets. See how they, you can't really see, but it gives a project description, project limits, projects locations, the start location and the end location, whether it's a complete streets project and if it's had a need assessment. And then it's got estimated cost too, which is helpful when it comes to prioritizing. This is kind of like a hand-drawn map of the study area. This is the rail trail conversation that we had. Although the alternate routes were not added into this plan because it was done before they were discussed, so we could update that as well. Mention of the East Close Greenway, the transportation improvement program kind of goes a little bit further into what we discussed, the process and how it works. The importance of supporting, supporting down, small business.
Can I, I, pardon, you've been, so that provides more opportunities for residents. Are you suggesting supporting existing businesses or is it suggesting the creation of additional business?
Definitely supporting existing businesses, 100%. And then there was conversation about if there was room for smaller businesses to start in the downtown, in the village center somewhere.
Cause I think some of, if there is any encouragement for additional business that it would really need to, to fill like specifics and like, we, you know, have enough convenience stores in town, for example, so I, I don't, you know, I'm not sure what we would have in downtown that would be helpful and do well enough in business and wouldn't take away from what I.
A hair in the Oswald.
It's not doing, yeah, I have four nails.
That may be a perfect thing to pick out.
A mycelial creature. Yeah, not obviously, not unique.
But that, that is one of the reasons why we're here. What do you wanna see in downtown? What happens if National Lumber closes? What do we do?
But the word, the phrase encouraging businesses is, I, I find vague, whether that gets encouraging to create, you know, or encouraging, like, I didn't know what was meant by that because.
We'll, we'll clarify, but definitely existing, definitely supporting residential. But National Lumber has changed hands, right? And the market, the, the general store has changed hands, so a lot has happened since this plan started.
What other businesses would you like in addition to it, Neil Pearson?
There's a lot of things that could be in downtown.
I think we certainly could have other businesses in the center of town, but it could be also, you know.
And zoning can encourage or discourage. So, does National Lumber own that land?
No.
Oh, do they own the land?
The way we do it.
I think so.
National Lumber is a sole company.
But I'm just, it's the company that owns it, do they own the land?
They own, they own, but.
I don't think it currently is National Lumber, I think they've already spun it up.
Right.
No, I just know whatever, so whatever the company is.
So the, the conversations that come to us, I mean, we've been hearing people say "what if?", and it is what if, you know? And right now, the zoning would allow certain things to occur there, given what the, you know, village center, village district, you know, allows.
So it could be an interesting little retail area.
Well, I mean, would our zoning allow that? If that's, would you want a mixed use, you know, some sort of first floor commercial activity with apartments on the second floor or, you know, do you want, you know, what do you, you want it all ripped down and turned into a park, you know? What, what's, what, what would you like to see there?
Artist studios.
Artist studios, you know?
A flower shop.
Commercial country English.
Commercial studio, yeah.
It's just, we have something like basic for instance, like up Highland and like keeping the small town vibe in the center, I would love to see like someone in town creates something, do something with it, that, you know, that goes against, not against Highland, but it's, we already have, Highland is there, like, that's what, where people go and if we want to do something with all the traffic that we currently have, it's gotta be something different, something, I love the pottery studio, yeah, the school, bakery, maybe an art bakery food thing, that's.
How about if you just take Route 62 and put it underground?
That would be a good thing.
The little dig.
That was recorded, okay. Just a little dig, a little dig that goes down. She brought it past St. Joe.
So wander around underground.
Yeah, the, the National Lumber parcel goes quite a ways down, it's quite big, it abuts the school property. So I would like to see some kind of a walkway that's not on a road between the school and the center of town on that parcel, because they're connected, you know? It would be the logical thing to do, very close. And if there's some way that we can do that via zoning or by, for some, some measure to do that, that would be a substantial thing to the town.
So just up there, freezer, handing the school to downtown, like in the middle?
The school, probably on the edge, but it comes down quite a bit.
So in addition to businesses, you know, we put several, over 55 communities in town, right? And I wonder how people feel about having mixed-use development, so that we've got more businesses and activities, unique ones, I agree with that, in the center, but we also have space for either young families or older people to live and be able to walk to all those services. Right now, you have to get in a car, you have to drive to downtown or take your chances to walk through the car room, et cetera. But how do you feel about having a mix of maybe smaller, less expensive multifamily housing mixed in with some new businesses in the center of town, if we figure out how to do it?
I think it sounds really good, Jay, but do we have any information about the effect of the apartments on town services? Cause I know originally when that went out, I was one of the people who said, you cannot tell me 200 units, there's gonna be three schoolchildren. So that was part to do with, there were studio, there were one bed and all the statistics said there won't be families living in there, but do we have any information on what the reality has been?
So the tradition was somewhere around 30 and we've got about 10.
Really? I'm all for mixed use on Saturday. I'm sarcastic, you can say, and I guess you can't not just on the school.
We commissioned two studies because we weren't sure, hope the first.
Okay, and the police, the police force too and their time and effort for domestic situations, you know, any kind of, I mean, if it's not really a huge drag on the town, I think more in the center is fabulous.
Well, if it's a garden, that's gonna need more parking.
Small, small.
Small.
I'm sorry.
I have a question, Paul, if you could use one.
I'm sorry to hear.
Are they building more housing down there?
At River Bridge?
Yes.
No.
I don't think so. Sorry.
No.
They're building more. I think if anything such at River Bridge and then plenty more construction, I mean, it's only for commercial space.
That's, that's what I thought, but someone had said that they were gonna put in more housing instead of commercial place.
I don't think so.
They had a proposal, that they would, the last, the last interview?
Is it still, no, it's before, not building it down, right? Or we didn't bring it up?
Yeah.
All right, yeah, go ahead.
I don't know if you can hear me, but.
We can.
Okay, so my first question is having to do with the parking. How many people there would have actually come if they had to park down at the school? And the capacity for the 1870 town hall is around 300 people, which on a good day, maybe 100 cars if it's gonna be full. And there is not that much parking in the center of town for one event. And I'm only bringing this up because you're proposing to reduce the amount of parking required, and yet we already have a parking issue and you want to promote more activities in the village center.
All right, so question number one, how many of you would have attended this meeting tonight if you had to park at the school and walk here?
We're all on race.
We're elevating sidewalks.
We're walkers. They're directing the rest of the city, all the inches of law.
And then she, she also mentioned that the capacity in this building is 300. And, yeah, so on a good day, that would be about. 100 parking lots, she was saying that, okay. Noted, Susan, thank you.
In terms of these discussions, these comments about new development in the village, if people look at the village and look at what's happened here in late years, the last 25 years, we've had three or four septic systems developed that had to be built above the previous grade of the ground. I think it's preposterous to consider significant residential development in the village. I think that the place is, is saturated. I think we should acquire the land up and back here to use potentially someday if need be for water source in this village, which is beginning to be an issue with wells. And we at the church are dealing with some of that currently. And we also have the matter of septic systems that, you know, have, all right, at the moment, we've managed to cover it all, but at some point, and it is, you've got in the study, that it might have to go further. The last thing I think we should be doing is developing profit, developing new uses, and particularly residential uses in the village when it's already saturated. It needs, new development needs to happen in a place that can handle a septic, and it has enough space to get the well on the same property, which is really a big, big problem here in the village. I think we need to watch that up. The other thing I want to speak of while I'm, I've got the floor for a minute, is historic preservation, which seems to have been moderately ignored in the project up to this point. If you consult the Massachusetts Historical Commission's website, you will find the village has been on the, on the state's structure inventory since nineteen sixty-nine. And we submitted a, an updated copy of it in April of two thousand nine from the Historical Commission and Society. And we have a very significant number of nineteenth century buildings here, which is what most of the village is. There's a couple of earlier and a couple a little later, but as a whole, it's a nineteenth century village. And it's really important, it's been looked at by the state since we submitted this, and the state Historical Commission would welcome it as a national register nominee. So I think that, that needs to go into the ideas that if we're gonna do other things in the village, we should keep that in mind because we don't want to detract from that possibility. And I have a copy of these two thousand nine papers, which I will give you here tonight, so that you have that to work with in hand. But that includes a listing of many other properties in the, in the village, which are also on that, in that structure inventory at the state level, and have been for many, many years. So I wanted, wanted to bring that up and to make clear that that ought to show in this study the historic nature of the village and the ambiance that we hopefully we would be able to keep with anything that's, that's a modification.
Excellent, thank you so much, that's very noted. The infrastructure was brought to my attention first as soon as the plan was released about the inadequate infrastructure in the downtown, so that will be added in.
Could you talk a little louder?
Yeah, the, I'm sorry, the, I guess inadequate is the best way to say it? The inadequate infrastructure downtown, the septic and the water, the well issue, was brought to my attention almost immediately after the plan was put together. So that will be updated in the plan. And these are kind of hypothetical situations as far as housing in the, in the center. And for, as far as the historic preservation portion, we can actually add more content into the story map plan for that as well. But I did, I touched on it briefly tonight, just with the Powder House project.
I think that people in Berlin really want to avoid public systems if they can. They managed to up to this point, I know that that, there may have to be some limited things in a few areas, but we really try to avoid that because we see that as power of who we are, that we are getting the water out of the ground and back into the ground on your own lot.
I think it's appreciated.
So two questions come up. One is, if open space becomes available, undeveloped parcels in the center of town, would you favor using community preservation act money to require those? Or would you rather they remain in the public domain, or a private domain, and be developed as the owner C. Fifth? I mean, how aggressive do you want CPA to be? And then, I guess the other question in regard to the center is, have we considered a historic district for the center? And how would people feel about that?
And do you mean that whole village circle that she showed? Or do you mean just here in the absolute center? Which, what do you refer to?
I, I think it goes out to that circle.
Yeah.
What, what does it mean if you did designate it? Is it historic district? Does that mean that there's certain caveats? Because I know when we looked at our house going on the national registry, we would have been extremely limited what we could have done to the structure. Does that then...
National register does not limit you.
Yeah.
It does not limit you with your property. It may affect your tax status and what you can deduct as costs. Or it may encourage things that you do that help to preserve the property that you can then get tax credits out of. But it does not affect your ability to change things.
Then we are missing things.
A local historic district would.
Yeah, I think that's...
A local historic district would have a lot of control over what people can see from the public street.
Are you talking about them for doing a local historic district?
I'm, I'm...
I'm just trying to follow the train here.
If I might clarify a little, Mary, Tim was talking about CPA and the housing within the city.
No, I understand.
Barry was talking about store, but Tim's question was on the floor. Would you rather see the town through its CPA arm deal with whatever residential development happened in the center versus private, right?
No, I thought, I thought the question was for open space, not necessarily more housing.
Well, CPA housing, or was it...
CPA has a housing department.
The top of my question...
Yeah, I understand.
The top of my question simply said, you want to protect plans or if it comes available, or do you want to see it developed?
Right.
You know, I've, I've heard that a number of times. First of all, the biggest reason Berlin is a borough is because we don't have town water and we don't have town sewer, and we don't want it. The next thing is, in the center, I'm thinking of this whole center of town, I've hiked and been all over, I can't think of any place where somebody could put in houses and leach fields and sewer systems, the land doesn't exist in the center of town. I don't, I mean, it would, I'd certainly want to look into it a little bit more, but I don't see it as a problem. And then the other thing is, if it's gonna cost half a million dollars to save, you know, ten acres in the center of town or a house lot or something, I'd rather also protect farmlands and mountainsides and hilltops. So the answer to the question, I wouldn't want to spend much money on buying in the center of town, I don't see the need for it. For it to...
So if there was currently a piece of property behind this building that was hypothetically coming on the market potentially soon, would there be support for using CPA money to protect it as open space? Or would people rather see it get sold and potentially whatever will perk up there? And we all know there are people in town who can get a lot of houses to perk up there.
So I have an opinion, but it's also stored in my backyard. But I have an opinion because I suspect this is kind of my backyard we're addressing. And I personally would like preserving open spaces. I also personally would put my money where my mouth is and go buy a chunk of land if that's what I have to do to preserve it. So paying taxes is cheaper than buying it, so.
Is this alleged potential property hypothetical?
Hypothetical.
Is it, does it have access to the powder house?
Not quite.
No, I don't believe so.
Okay.
Some of it could.
That's what I was thinking, Barry.
We have access to it. The town owns the powder house and the access to it now, but very little.
Okay.
I make it a...
Just allegedly.
So I would offer Tim, or Carol, I think some position like that, this hypothetical land that I'm thinking in, what I visualize it sort of like, I think that you folks long ago did this creatively on some lands when you first had mall money and you took and used some of the frontage and made some house lots possibly, and then preserved pieces of it, something along that lines. I mean, I think there's the potential contrary to what my friend over there said, where some smaller senior housing or smaller worker housing or smaller affordable homes could be situated in Carterville off of land where it might come in off of Carter Street. And then, as it went up, then save that pieces that are further on up for use to tie in if some other piece of land became available. Because I believe there's, there's...
The center of town is all rock.
There is, there's, right, so there's the way that you could have a nice, open area that people might want to come to or ride bikes up to to sit up at the top and make a whatever, sort of combination, I would say.
We'll never have town water and we'll never have town sewer, basically because it is all land and all rock.
I, I, would just like to clarify, I hope that I did not say anything about free water and sewer into definitely that sound value.
So portrait, even if you make sure it's for...
Okay, yes. Just wanted to add in my dream world, and I know that there's different properties there and that all of them may or may not come up for the conversation at this time, but that it would be amazing to have some amount of trails and better labeling of the powder house and the historical landmark and some ability to sort of have recreation of that type in that space. It's hard as a family, the young one, without being able to, we walk partway towards Carterville and then turn around on the sidewalk and, and walk to the school and then turn around and sort of have nowhere to go without eating. And being able to have those opportunities would be really nice. Is that a reminder of the alleged property? Or are you talking about... Yes, yeah. And I know that the alleged property probably does not connect to the powder house, but that some day in a long-term plan, that there is other land in that area that I know is privately owned and is not part of this conversation. I'm not trying to scare into meeting it, but someday in life.
Well, that's something, I mean, that's something I personally, being on conservation and planning, I have learned to say X will never happen. I will learn, have learned not to say X will never happen. There have been, right, there have been lots that have been developed that I thought could never be developed. There have been things that happened. So we are trying to be a little more proactive instead of reactive. And sure, right now, Jane's garden is Jane's garden and Jane's garden will be Jane's garden as long as she wants it to be. But someday, I, I, I...
When we're all dead.
Saying that someday Jane's not gonna plant her garden. And then what happens to that property? Someday, National Lumber is not gonna be National Lumber. And then what happens to that property?
And that's my point with that area, is that the someday when, if something were to happen, that it would be wonderful for that to accentuate the powder house hill and really be a feature of open space that is really easy to use.
Right, and that's the whole point of plan? That's the whole point of planning at all, is to say someday, what do we want to see?
Carol, on your hypothetical property, what would be the acreage you have?
Roughly half of the open space.
Wait a minute, no, what's it, somebody can't... It's every acre. Obviously, part of it perks, I hope so anyway. And, of course, it's hypothetical, but why couldn't you just both have a piece of open space or a piece of it dedicated to some of the CPA portion of housing?
Certainly could.
And back to Jay's question about the center of town, I, I'm with Barry on, really, we gotta think about that water septic infrastructure. But if you did it, it'll low density. And one of the ways to do it at low density is to keep it like one story or one and a half story when you build, and that's better for accessibility, for handicap, felder, accessibility anyway. So if you, if you would shoot for low density in a place like National Lumber, I would think that would be very good use of CPA housing money and so on. Same thing on the center, hypothetical, if you, if you keep, I would say, keep the rock of the space, some of it, you have an apartment, and you have access to it because it's a public project, you can set it up, you can provide access, that would be lovely in the center.
It's not more so much a question, but a comment that I do feel like if the land back here were to be developed or not have this open space, you would very much change the flavor of the town center's ideal to have that land not open to it.
Although Mary's points about, could you save four, five acres, could you do a small low density area? Can you win with it? All right, we have about seven minutes.
I was just gonna say, personally, if it's going to be developed, I don't think we should put our CPA money to it. Let the free market do it and handle it through planning and our zoning.
I think they're talking about the affordable housing portion of CPA money.
I, I, oh, you did, okay.
Do you have any final comments, anything that we did not touch on that should be addressed? You've kind of covered a lot, right? Anything with a plan in place?
I just have one little question. So you, you mentioned the aqueduct trail and the rail trail. Like, with the expansion of the sidewalks, not to go back to a much earlier topic, but is there a plan to like, how those would be connected? Because in my opinion, like, that's free traffic that doesn't come with parking. You know, like, these people come on bikes, they leave on bikes. And so they might, you know, be a good answer to like driving some traffic to these businesses without having to worry about some of the constraints that we have been mentioning.
So the question is, will that trail or the other rail trail, rerouted rail trail, connect to the sidewalks?
Yes, is there any plan to like, or, you know, trail in the woods even, like, you know, people use these GPS that just like have heat maps of, where people ride their bikes where they run and stuff. So if you can connect sidewalks to, or make Route sixty eight bikeable, like, people just show up as soon as like, oh, somebody's biking here.
Right.
So I think, you know, if you at all manage to connect them, even if it's not like a immediate connection, like, people show up.
I would one hundred percent entertain discussing that further and adding something like that into the plan.
Are you like from the future where there's a town? We're all around, see everybody? I know, I'm serious, but obviously...
So Barbara has it, which is mostly for biking. Most by route, like, you just click a point, click another point, and it finds you the most popular routes to go through.
Look at, look at Gatesbahn. Look at Gatesbahn.
Yeah.
It's on all those.
Exactly, and you were saying like, you know, obviously GPS throw a lot of cart traffic, which is bad, but there's an upside to it too. And then, yes, Robert has the same thing for riding.
Cool, that was a job.
Yeah, I just wanted to let that ring in. And you may, or you could, the trail, DOT, MassDOT is the one who's responsible for the Route sixty-two project eventually, and they are well aware of the other trail systems that are happening, so making sure that it's on their radar would be helpful too, but I think it's worth adding into the plan while we, while we have it.
Does MassDOT have any information from any other towns? Route sixty-two is a long highway. Is there any other towns that have done any similar work?
On a similar runway, you mean?
Can we, can MassDOT ask them if they have any here? Does that work with MassDOT?
I'm sure, yeah.
You just have to know the right...
It's just the district tree, yeah. I mean, we could connect you with somebody, we have a very large transportation staff too, who would be happy to have a conversation with you. But I don't know, often they'll have their head of a route that is similar to sixty-two.
And the, and the good news is that the Transportation Division of Central Mass Regional Planning is gonna move into DOT's office in Worcester.
Yeah, so they'll be like...
They, we have their ears, big time.
Like, never be more than... I can't think of a road that is a state road that's...
When we did it, one twenty-two stopped at the traffic going.
When we did it, 122 stopped with the traffic going.
Other parts of 62.
Other parts of 62, there are other towns.
Yeah, true. They're not in our region though, unfortunately, so. It would be a different.
Well, maybe not in the University of Maine.
No, 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 they're not in my region.
Your region?
Uh, yeah, I'm, so DOT has a district three, which is the same as ours, I believe. So it's a different district, we can connect you to the right.
Do districts have anything but foot?
Interconnection, yes.
Do they have these?
Yes.
Okay. Something we can bring up in that meeting?
Yes.
I think we found a problem, so is there both 117 and 62 at the center of town?
Great, that's been out for a while.
It seems like they're kind of like attacking their problems originally.
You know, you go west down the continent, it doesn't, it's not bad.
I think it's Stowe.
Stowe might be one for us to look at, see what they have done.
We can watch that, right?
It's interesting, Stowe in so many ways is larger than Berlin, but so similar. There's so many different things that they're doing that we're doing at the same time. I mean, they're at 3% for CPA, they're part of the ASAC Regional Housing Consortium, they're, you know, their zoning issues are frequently, I mean, they foreshadow situations that we're gonna face in a lot of ways. So, and actually, we're a compatriot, Trish lives in Stowe, so.
That's what I said, well, we can get some information on.
We can get.
I think that would be the best, that I can think of off the top of my head, that would be the best community along 62 that has issues, has similar issues. All right, you guys, you've been fantastic. Hopefully, we covered everything that, the plan that we would like to cover. I think we got some really great feedback. I know it's past Debbie's bedtime, and it is, I'm super grateful for all of your input and for Cabel Access for hosting this for us. And I have my information, my contact information is on some of the handouts that you have. If you, if anything comes up, I know we've been emailing back and forth with somebody from the RSVP. If anything comes up that you think of when you go home, please feel free to reach out. Like I said, we'll have another meeting with the Berlin town staff and then we'll go to the public after that. So there's gonna be plenty of opportunity to impart. Thank you so much.